The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Welcome to the September 4th Board of Education meeting. And please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we move on into other parts of the agenda, I just want to remind people or let newcomers know that if you are here, we do have public comment on our agenda. And if you are looking to participate in public comment, there is a sign up sheet on the table over there. Moving on, can we have a moment of silence, please? For Harry J. Fiorillo, a teacher in the district from September 3, 1958, to July 13, 2000. And Carol Hanson, a teacher at Patterson and Jennings School from September 7, 1971, to June 30, 2006. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item number two on the agenda, Staff and Student Recognition. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Fortin to take that.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to recognize Liza Seagull, who is one of 76 educators from the 430 teachers who applied, who was awarded the J. William Fulbright Foreign Scholarship to be able to experience working abroad, studying abroad, as part of the Fulbright Teachers for Global Classrooms programs in 2019 and '20. She will be participating in an international educational exchange program sponsored by the U.S. government, which was designed to build relations between people of the United States and people of other countries that are needed to solve global challenges. The Fulbright Teachers for Global Classrooms is a year-long professional development opportunity for U.S. elementary, middle, and high school teachers to develop skills for preparing students for a competitive global economy. So Liza was selected on the basis of her academic and professional achievement, as well as her demonstrated leadership potential. So we are very excited to have Liza here from Green Hills School, as she's one of our general music teachers there. You can come on up so we could recognize you. Quite an accomplishment. And we're so proud of Liza, and we can't wait to hear, after she experiences this program, she'll be traveling next summer. And then when she gets back, she'll be sharing her experiences with all of our music department here. So we're excited and so thankful that you applied and were selected to bring this experience back for our students. So thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We will move on to item number three, Approval of the Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 7, 2009? Nineteen.
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstaining.
Abstaining, thank you very much. Motion passes. We will move on to item number four, Committee Reports. I am going to ask Mrs. Brown if she would give the Finance Committee report.
Hello. Good evening, Commissioners. We met in late August and we gave an end-of-year report. And at the end of the 2018-19 school year, we finished with a deficit of $653,024. Most of that was attributed to special education. However, we did bring that deficit down to 1.8 million, and we were able to mitigate approximately two-thirds of that from savings and other areas due to our budget freeze throughout the school year. The superintendent did request an additional allocation of $660,000 at the Board of Finance meeting. They voted and approved that so that we will finish the year with a positive number. I also gave a brief update with a July 31 snapshot. We are just in process of putting all our contracts together for our outplace students. We have encumbered all of our salaries. It's a very early snapshot on July 31. We do show an available balance of almost $41 million, but it is not a clear capture of where we're headed. So you'll look for updates in our August and September reports. That is it for this evening unless you have further questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Brown? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And now I will call on Commissioner Doobie for a student achievement report.
The Student Achievement Committee met on Wednesday, August 21, and we had the first reading of the middle school mathematics curriculum. We also discussed student data privacy and our district utilization going forward on the Google platform, and that was given to us by Rob Puzio.
Any questions for Commissioner Doobie? Thank you very much. We move on to item five, the Chair Report. I would like to just mention again, Commissioner Wilson has mentioned it, but it warrants a reminder. On Friday, October 18, at the Doubletree, the Bristol Business Ed Foundation will hold their annual Trivia Night fundraiser. This is so much fun. I've gone to the, this is the third. I've been to the first two, and we have a blast. Bristol Business Education Foundation, I'm sure you all know, but just in case somebody doesn't know, awards anywhere between a dozen and 15, sometimes more, mini-grants to teachers throughout the district to do things for their students that the general budget does not cover. So this is a great way for us to say thank you. Maybe we can have a competition between Board of Education Commissioners and Administrators. Set up two teams. I'm now going to call on Dr. Dieter to please give a report on the Boulevard.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School Building Committee met August 22. We reviewed the first round of construction estimates. They did come in high. This is not unusual at this phase of the project because our first pass includes all-in, all those things that we would like to have. We also understand that it came in high also due to circumstances around environmental remediation, our current premium theater package, and some scope creep, as they refer to it. That's the size of the addition and other areas that are related to the theater, the gymnasium, and food preparation. So we're going to be going back. We have a special meeting tomorrow evening where we begin the process of going through and looking at what's nice to have and what's necessary, and then aligning that with our ed specification and proceeding forward. We also met with the Office of School Construction, Grants, and Review to discuss the initial construction estimate and further provisions around reimbursement and funding. And again, these are the activities that are typical for a project of this size and scope at this stage of the project. Happy to report that we received a written endorsement from the Bristol Historical Society around the proposed drawings for the entryway. As you recall, this has been an area of contention between the Building Committee and SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office. I think we've cleared the hurdles associated with that, so we're continuing to move forward. And we have, if you've driven by the site, you may have noticed that our project sign is up. It's up on the hill. It kind of blends in with the building a little bit, but that was nice to see that go up about a week or so ago. As I mentioned, we have a special meeting tomorrow night, 6:30, in Room 36, and we welcome any participation at that meeting.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone, for Dr. Dieter? Moving on. Thank you, sir. We now move on to item number six, Student Representative Report. And we have some new student representatives. I'm going to ask Superintendent Carbone to introduce.
I am excited to introduce three new student representatives and our returning student representative from Bristol Central. So they're all going to come up. They'll introduce themselves and why they would like to be a student representative. So first, from Bristol Eastern, we have Drew Dophney and Madison Turner. And from Bristol Central, as you know, Katie Funkt, a returning senior, and Madison Laprise.
Hello. My name is Drew Dophney. I'm a senior at Bristol Eastern High School. And I'm very honored to be chosen to be the representative for the Board of Ed. I wanted, or rather was inspired, to take this position from Alexandra Allen, who was a past representative. And I know that one of her contributions was to make midterms half-day for students in order for them to go home early and study, things like that. I thought that was a really great change. And so I'm excited to use my perspective as a student to make those same contributions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Madison Turner, and I'm the junior from Bristol Eastern High School. And I really wanted the position because it gives me an outlet that is higher than just our governance board at our school. So I have more of an outlet of the voice of our students for all schools, not just my high school. I'm excited.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Madison Laprise from Bristol Central High School. I'm a junior, and I wanted to be the junior representative so I could help make positive change or continue positive continuity with a unique student perspective. Thank you.
And we have Katie returning to us. We're happy to see you again. Katie Funkt, right? Welcome back.
It's good to be back. Good evening. And I have a short report tonight because school has just started and all our activities are gearing up for the next month. I would like to mention what we did over the summer. We had, well, I had, as a senior Rambassador training. And this is, we have seniors in our advisory classrooms or our homeroom classrooms to help with freshmen and help their adjustment through the middle school to high school. It was very great, and we used a lot of team building. We introduced the circle to help kids with their emotional outlets. And I think it's very positive. Their orientation was August 20, which was very exciting. And that's about it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, Katie, for your report. And to our new representatives, we all look forward to hearing some great insight that you can bring to us. We are now going to move on to the Superintendent Report.
Good evening. On Tuesday, the 27th, we welcomed back our entire faculty and staff at Convocation, this year's Convocation. We were greeted and inspired by Mayor Ellen Zappo, as well as Vice Chair Commissioner Weber in place of Chair Mr. Wilson. And we had two keynote speeches. One was from Malcolm Huckabee, who is a past graduate from Bristol Central High School, currently a parent of three children at Green Hills, and both a financial advisor and a basketball analyst for ESPN. And we were inspired and also challenged by our Teacher of the Year, Marcy DeShane. She shared with us the way that she connects her classroom to the community, and she would like you to follow her on Twitter. And she challenged the teachers to also use Twitter as a means to collaborate. We were also able to share that she is one of five finalists within the state for Teacher of the Year, and we're very excited that we have the potential of having a state Teacher of the Year. The theme was "Leave a Legacy, Leave a Legacy." And we have a lot to be proud of in Bristol based on the staff who went through our schools and their stories and how they inspire. And Malcolm's presence at the Convocation was twofold. One, a thank you to the staff and the teachers who supported him during his pre-K through 12 experience, but also to celebrate and to remind us that we have an impact. And our impact is on the 8,000 students that we currently have and have the privilege to teach, and that our job is to improve upon and ensure that they come back and give back to our community. Additionally, as a result, we have to remember our legacy. And some of our legacy is that Bristol has a phenomenal past where we have been the district written about in many books for lots of reasons. Three in particular. One, the way we use data to improve student outcomes, the way we design our units of instruction, and the way we use collaboration and inquiry to improve capacity in teacher practice. And it was a reminder for our staff of our roots and also a reminder of the things that we currently are proud of. And one of the things that we're currently proud of is that we are one of two school districts in the state that close the gap between our high-need students and their non-high-need peers on access to AP and Performance and Advanced Placement courses. The highlight of Bristol compared to our area communities is a telltale sign of that. We also have a national principal of principals, and Mr. Wininger, two years ago, was named and honored because of his work within the Bristol Central community. And you, we all know, Dr. Galloway was nominated as Administrator of the Year from the NEAG School of Education from UConn. Countless times over the past 10 years, both Bristol Eastern and Bristol Central have been recognized in U.S. News &amp; World Report for a top high school. And I think, as you know, the state continues to use indicators of success to judge school districts against each other. And I chose to use four schools from Avon and four schools within Bristol. And if they're going to use benchmarks of DPIs or district performance indicators, then we need to make sure that our staff and our community knows that we are similar, if not better, in some cases than some of our schools. And these are four schools in Avon, one of our neighboring towns. So it was an opportunity to celebrate and also to remind the staff of who we are as a Bristol education community and the work that they've done. And to also inspire that for the next 181 days, we have the privilege of having students in our care to help them be the best that they can possibly be. A reminder to the Board of Education that our Board of Education Retreat is September 17 from 5:45 to 8:45 at the Bristol Boys and Girls Club. And that meeting was posted. And then lastly, yesterday was our opening day. And just a few, a slideshow to share with you what yesterday looked like across the 14 schools and programs. That was the song that we closed Convocation with, sung by Miss Latonya Farrell, "Million Dreams", which we have 8,000 dreamers that we're going to help make sure that they reach their dreams. Also, thank you to Gina for putting that video together. And lastly, of note, yesterday, we had 98% of our students sitting in their seat on the first day, and 100% of the students at our new Bristol Preparatory Academy were in attendance. So we've had some great successes, and we're looking forward to a great school year.
Thank you very much. I want to share with you, I was here yesterday for a meeting at 2 o'clock, and the superintendent and the deputy superintendent walked in with grins on their faces, so excited. They had been to every single school yesterday. And it was kind of neat to see them so bubbly.
It's the best part of the job.
Yeah, they were. They were bubbly. Okay, so we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Before we vote on that, does anybody need to pull something out?
Yes, through the chair, I recommend that we move item 8.1A, Administrative Hire. I believe we can address that later in the business.
Yep, we'll put that in New Business. Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. In that case, do I have a motion to pass Consent Agenda, items 8.1B through 8.2B? So moved. Second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. Standing public comment. No public comment. Okay, so we will move along to deliberated items. One second. That is not, I did not think that was a question you asked me. We're good? Yes. Okay. No public comment. We will move on to deliberated items. And the first item is 10.1, Authorized Signatory for the Bristol Board of Education. The Deputy Superintendent.
This item requires a resolution. It will be read in a roll call vote following the motion. Resolve that Michael Dieter, EDD, Deputy Superintendent of Schools, is hereby authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Bristol Board of Education any and all contracts and amendments, and to execute and approve on behalf of the Bristol Board of Education other instruments, a part of or incident to such contracts and amendments effective until otherwise ordered by the Board of Education Commissioners.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second. And we take a roll call vote. Mrs. Everett? Commissioner Caggianno?
Yes.
Commissioner Doobie?
Yes.
Commissioner Grabowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hens?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Patton?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Pass seven. The motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item, item 10.2, is our teacher hiring overview for this school year. And go. Thank you, sir. Mr. Galloway?
Good evening, Commissioners. We had a very busy summer. In your packet of information, you'll see teacher, new hire, teacher information for 33 new hires, eight male hires, 25 female hires. As far as where the teachers, the new teachers reside and where they come from, Bristol led the pack with nine of the 33 hires coming from Bristol, three from Cheshire, and then a mixture of different other cities. That really concludes my information pending your questions.
How many outstanding positions do we still have to fill?
About five. About five.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Just out of curiosity, are any of our new teachers here? Oh, we've got one. Stand up, we'll clap for you.
Familiar face.
Chemistry hard to fill.
Yeah. All right. We will move on to item 10.3, Bristol Technical Advisory Committee Update. And I believe Jamie is going to, Jamie Reckenberg is going to help us with that.
Good evening. I wanted to update you on our technical advisory, which is a mandate as part of our Perkins funding. Our committee strives to connect local business along with our staff and students. As a part of this year's committee work, I've focused the committee along three major goals. Our first goal is to promote Manufacturing Day in our middle schools. The Manufacturers' Day will have local manufacturers coming into our buildings to promote those businesses and showcase what local business has to offer students as they plan their secondary and post-secondary planning. Our second goal is to promote our CTE programmings and career clusters as well as align those two local businesses. So right now, through the Chamber of Commerce, we are, we have asked for the chamber to sponsor posters to be placed within our high school to showcase what businesses have in the area and how our CTE programming aligns with that. And the third is kind of funny and fun. It is the Groundhog Job Shadow Day, which will take place on January 31. It will allow students to apply for a job shadow within a local space. And the students will apply and be accepted by that local business, and they will spend their school day shadowing a local member of business. Questions? One more, little caveat here, is our Bristol, our technical advisory is also supporting us in the Perkins Enhancement Grant that was just awarded to us about two weeks ago. That just went through the Consent Agenda. So I appreciate their work in that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're probably gonna, I should have told you not to sit down. Yes, we're moving on to Curriculum Revision, item 11.1, Middle School Mathematics Curriculum Revision, grade six, grade seven, grade seven bridge, and grade eight.
Okay. So Student Achievement Committee previewed the revised Middle School Mathematics Curricula for all four courses. And they even got to participate in some of the activities where they were able to identify the relationship between circle diameter and circumference to find pi. It was fun. And the key components of this revised curricula are problem-based learning, real-life context. It's student-centered. It's focused on discourse and students making connections between their experiences and the content. It utilizes small group and partner work. I would like to ask if you have any questions regarding this revised curriculum? And otherwise, I request that you approve it, please.
We have a motion to approve the Middle School Mathematics Curriculum Revision. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. And we will move on to New Business. Commissioner Patton, you have pulled out 8.1A.
Yes, and I would like to turn that over to our superintendent.
Thank you. I'm extremely pleased to introduce two new administrators to the Bristol family. And either one, whoever would like to come up to the microphone first. either one, whoever would like to come up to the microphone first, free dips. So first, Leah McCabe, who is a dean of students and assessment coordinator at Northeast Middle School. Leah.
Thanks. All right, to write it down. Thank you very much, Dr. Carbone. I'm incredibly honored and excited to be named the new dean of students at Northeast. I've been part of the Bristol Central ramilly for the last 13 years, and I've done a little bit of everything at BC, from team leader, department chair, and avid coordinator, to building sets for theater productions and creating the Rambassadors. I am blessed to have been part of such a caring and supportive staff. I would be remiss if I didn't say a special thank you to Pete Wininger, over there, for always believing in me and my crazy ideas. I will carry his mantra to always do what's best for kids with me to Northeast. I am delighted to join Dan Sanstrom and the talented faculty, staff, and students at Northeast. Finally, I just wanted to thank my husband, Kelly, for his love and support. Although we won't be carpooling together, I'm most thankful for him taking over the avid students that I had as freshmen four years ago and seeing them through the college process. He's an amazing avid teacher, and I'm happy that they have him. And thank you again, Dr. Carbone, and board commissioners, for this opportunity.
Thank you.
And an additional assistant supervisor of physical education and wellness, Sarah Hale.
Good evening, everybody. This is my 17th, correct, check that, 18th year of teaching phys ed and health. This is my seventh year in the district, and I'm very excited to start taking on this administrative role. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to item number 13, information that anybody has for the benefit of the district. I will start on my right with Councilman Kelly. Nothing, sir? Commissioner O'Brien?
No.
Commissioner?
No. No.
All right. Thank you, folks, and we'll start on this way. I don't know if we have liaison reports, we've only had two days of school.
Nothing to report.
I think Commissioner Doobie likely will.
I do.
There you go.
So yesterday was a perfect first day of school back at West Bristol. They launched our The Pack Pride, and students and staff worked together to set expectations. The Bristol Fire Department and Public Works gave special back-to-school rides to two West Bristol students, and they are looking forward to a fantastic school year.
Thank you very much. Anyone down this end? Okay. That is it? I will ask for a motion to adjourn? No, I'm just...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Somebody needs to tell Chairman Wilson.
He's not coming back. Best meeting ever.
His last, his shortest was 47 minutes.
You beat him.
Quite a bit, too. Well done.
So thank you all very much for coming. Go forth and educate. (Music)